This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Time is six o'clock. You called the meeting to order this special meeting of the Southampton Select Board, Tuesday, June 11th, 2024. We'll start with Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is any member of the public that wishes to speak on an item, either listened or not listened, on the agenda, may do so now. Seeing none, first item of new business is Kestrel Purchase/Sale Agreement Property Deed Approval and Signing.
Hi, everyone. This is just a follow-up. I know we approved the conservation restriction. This is regarding the actual purchase of the land itself, and so we're asked tonight to sign the purchase and sale agreement for the purchase and acquisition, and then the deed acceptance as well. And so we have this closing scheduled for June 25th. We just got our title back. Everything is in place, but happy to answer any questions. I also sent along a copy of the baseline documentation report as a follow-up, because I know that was requested last time. If you have any stuff, please go ahead and sign it.
Questions, comments, discussion?
Yeah, Bridget, this is fantastic. This is really the first one, second one through the gates on the Mountain Waters Project in East Hampton. You didn't identify the seller. We're talking about the
Garfunkel.
Garfunkel, Fomer Road, 200 acres, ballpark.
So, West Hampton is 151 acres, and then the West Hampton park will be 122.
East Hampton is 150 plus 122 in west, or did I
Sorry, only 150, and West Hampton 122.
Good. Good. So now we know what we're talking about. I was a little concerned the Conservation Commission may have approved the CR twice, but this one, we got our fingers in both pieces of the pie. The town will acquire the fee interest outright ownership from Garfunkel and convey a conservation restriction already negotiated to Kestrel.
Yes.
So, the town and Kestrel are partners forevermore on this property. Great. Does it have an address? Is it like 280 Fomer?
Yes. Yeah, it does have a formal address, but I'd have to get back to you.
Oh, it will. We'll take care of that. Thank you. I fully support this. I've looked through the conservation restriction baseline detail. I did glance at the deed, actually, yes.
So, do I take that as a motion to approve and authorize the Select Board to sign?
I move that we approve and authorize the Select Board to sign the deed, accepting title or acquiring title in Garfunkel property.
I do, I think the meeting was listed at 6:15. Not sure if you have to wait to vote until that time, to take the actual vote.
It's rounding.
Duly noted. May we proceed?
Yeah.
Cycle back and confirm it.
We'll ratify the vote at 6:15 since we started. Okay. Is a motion made and seconded?
Seconded, yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Motion passes. Um, thank you. Is, that's your only item, right?
Yes, and I'll just give an update that we're moving forward with FY25 paves of this grant, and so I did get the grant contract for FY25 paves, and I'll follow up with you after it, and I have a hard copy here that I can hand off, and we can talk about it.
Cool. Um, informal access is okay? That is, a knowledgeable person who stays on the correct property can walk it or not until after closing?
No, you're welcome to go and
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
So, not use the 6:15 start times?
You can do everything.
I know, but I can hear Chris when she comes in.
Somebody's going to speak to you.
So perhaps we can take up transfer station fees and have an 11-minute conversation before there's a vote?
That one can be a regular signature, but then
Trace? State your name and position for the record.
Oh, you can, yeah.
Randall from Southampton, Iowa, Superintendent and Transfer Station Director.
Evening.
Chief Cook and Bottle Washer.
So, the topic before us is, we're going to talk about transfer station schedule, station fees, and I will say that during a recent meeting of the cost efficiency meeting, I noted that I don't think we ever took a formal vote on this. I believe after that meeting, based on historical information, that there was an implied consent that if you pass the budget, the Select Board automatically accepted these fees. So, the suggestion was in the spirit of transparency that we hold a standalone session on this, and however we address it going forward, we do so, but our highway superintendent's here tonight to talk about how we came to these fees and why, and then we'll formalize it.
Sure. So, as I spoke about it, previous meetings, but maybe nobody watched those. We have, the trends of the transfer station are thus. We are losing usership, if that's a word. We're losing users, permit fee payers, to private trash companies, seems to people that are willing to pay a premium for convenience. At the same time, we've seen disposal costs go up sharply, particularly in the recycling commodity market. In previous contracts with our receiving facility, we have not had to pay any fee to process our recyclables, and given in some cases, we have seen dividends when the commodity price was high enough. Currently, the commodity market is not good, and we have to pay a processing fee per ton for recyclables. Add those two things together, and we, what it has caused us to do is run a deficit in the investment. So.
Roughly how much?
Um, this year, I projected 20k-ish. But I'm not clear on if that's cumulative from year to year.
Okay.
Twenty over 120? What's your total operating budget annually?
Operating budget for this year
For the transfer?
232,835 is my
So about 10%, give or take, 10% shortfall? Rough numbers?
That's an awful lot permits to sell.
Yeah. As a consequence, I have raised fees. There's almost a balance. You're trying to raise fees, but not so much that you exacerbate your user deficit. So, and it's a moving target a lot of times, because you don't know what people are going to throw away, and the transfer station budget, some things subsidize other things. Like, for example, we accept oil, or we did, by proposing a dollar per gallon out, in the past, we have accepted it for free, because we don't want people dumping in, in the woods, down catch bases. It's pretty bad environmental, environmental costs, if you will, for one incident. We also do the same thing with mercury containing devices, like thermometers. We don't want that getting out into the environment. It's highly toxic. Heavy metals, we collect lead batteries for free. There's a whole list.
UV tubes are fluorescent?
Yes, because they have a very small amount of mercury in them. And so we subsidize those costs and other things. So, I, I did a rate study with Valley Recycling in Southampton, who everybody states is cheaper than Southampton. I didn't find that to be the case, and in fact, I raised some of the rates to start to be competitive, you know, with that. Recognizing that they do not have permit fee, but they have significantly higher bag fees, we use the page you throw method to try and get people to separate out their recyclables, so you can pay for what you disposed.
And Valley Green, their hours of operation are greater than yours, or equal?
I don't have that information, but I think they are a little bit a lot, a lot longer than we have. Higher volume is how they probably
Which makes it more convenient.
Yes.
Right, yeah. But in order for us to extend hours, we'd have to spend more money.
Because then we've got to cover additional days of wages.
Yeah.
How many, oh yeah, how many licenses did you sell last year? Permits, whatever the word is?
I can give you strong numbers, but around 900.
Around 900, thanks.
I think one of the things we also noticed was a trend over at least the last three years is the number of permits have stayed relatively consistent. However, the regular permits are decreasing and the senior discount permits are increasing. So, it's the same number of parties coming in, but they're aging out of the system and thereby getting a discount.
That makes sense, based on just the demographics of America these days.
Yeah, we saw six o'clock, and we're rolling along. So, we're on the transfer station right now.
Welcome, Cindy. The vice chair convened the meeting, because we had quorum.
Oh.
I missed that little point. And we're on the transfer station fee schedule right now.
Hi, Randall.
So, this, this fee schedule that is proposed before us supports the recommended budget that ultimately was passed by the voters. They had this in consideration when you made that change. Whether it's sufficient or not is a different story, but
Yes.
You set the budget anticipating that this fee schedule would be placed, and today is June 11th, and if we pass this tonight, we'll be able to give 21-day notice. I'm assuming the fee schedule will take effect July 1st, or would you kick it in sooner?
The fees, except for, so a lot of residents want to buy their permits early.
Yep.
What that does, it also gives us an influx of cash at the end of the fiscal. So, we start selling them like two weeks early. It also helps my transfer station attendant not get inundated with everybody trying to buy them first.
So, somebody bought their permit the week before, the last week of June, would they pay the existing fee, or would they pay the proposed new fee?
Well, if you ratify that fee schedule, I'm selling them for the next fiscal year, so they would need a new
At that rate, okay.
But the rest of them won't go into effect until after July 1st.
Gotcha.
Does that seem logical to everybody?
It does. We just need to word the motion the right way.
And if anybody, I mean, if people want to argue, they can just wait till July 1st to buy.
Right. Okay.
It's a convenience that works for the tenant and
We're almost done.
I feel like you exactly
I had it so strong in my head that I knew what answer I was looking for. If they buy it on June 25th
I just got here.
For the 25-year
Yes.
Sorry, guys.
They'll pay the new fee.
Is the meeting at 6:15?
Okay.
Assuming you ratify
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Never mind, I'm going in. It's at 6:00.
That is what I thought. I move that we ratify these fees, which were used in developing the budget projection for the transfer station enterprise fund, and the Select Board has previously reviewed them and found a little issue. We understand that this must be predicated on your existing levels of participation, and you've raised the concern that by raising fees, there may be a downward effect on the number of permits or activity generally. But I surely would hate to see white goods showing up on our conservation lands. I move that we ratify the fee structure.
So, the motion, if I understand it, is to ratify the fee structure to take effect July 1st, with the exception of the stickers, the permits, to take effect within 48 hours?
Can we do it for tomorrow? The transfer station opens tomorrow. I'm ready to go. If you'd rather, I'll wait till
Okay, so, so ratify the fees with the exception of the permits for next year, that you sell in advance should, should reflect this fee schedule. The rest of the tipping fees and all that will take effect on July 1st after notice. That's the motion. Is there a second?
Do you want to discuss?
Only if there gets a second, we can discuss.
Second, first, and then a discussion.
Under discussion, and I yield the ruling back to the chair.
Sorry, guys. I had the time at 6:15, per the request of one of our Select Board members.
It was at 6 o'clock we started, and we were four minutes in before that was pointed out to us.
Okay. Well, anyway, my apologies for being late. So, we have a motion and a second. Do we have a discussion, please?
So, the discussion I would like to have is, we're obviously running a deficit in our transfer fees. What, how much, how much do we lose by offering a discount for seniors? What's that work out to?
Well, so
We've upped it $20 now, from what it was, right?
25.
Was, it was $50, it was a $25 discount.
Yeah, 25, yeah.
It's now a $20 discount.
Right. Yeah, so it's increased a little bit. So, the discount amount is less than it was? Yeah.
Wait a minute.
Yeah.
Something that you have to run through earlier.
Yeah, so it was 50, now it's going to 60.
I sent out, I sent you out two fee schedules, one for the current year, one for the proposed.
Right. So, the fee schedule for '24 was 75 for basic transfer station sticker, non-commercial. That's now changing to 80, and it was 50 for seniors age 65, and that's going to, that was 50 going to 60.
So, how many, how many discounted permits are there? Because it's that number multiplied by 20.
The discount should be
How many senior permits did you issue this year? To answer Dan's question.
Uh, approx, just over 500.
So, about half, half of your, I think at one point you told us there were 1,000 permits, roughly?
Closer to 900 per year.
Yeah, something like that. So, about half of
$10,000.
About seniors.
So, that's 10,000 of the permits, and then hopefully we did the fees on the tipping fees for bulky materials, and we've also gone up a dollar on that.
And I will add, Dan, that at the Cost Efficiency Committee meeting that I referenced earlier, the, this is an area that the committee wants, the group wants to explore, but they didn't want to stop anything for this year. It would be the 2025 project
Yeah, sounds like a plan.
And then report back.
It's going to, it's going to take a little bit longer than it would be to get these fees in place for this year, so.
That's great. I'd rather have people think it through with detail than trying to take some swings at ways we can save some money here tonight, so it makes more sense.
Okay. Good. Any other discussion? If not, could I have a vote, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Hearing no opposition, that passes. So, the transfer fees will be in effect, some tomorrow and some on July 1st, as stated in the motion. Very good. Thanks. Scott?
The Select Board did put off the vote for the first gen item until after 6:15, so you still need to vote on that.
Okay.
So, I'll make a motion to, Stephen, you want to restate your motion?
For the purchase of the Garfunkel property on Fomer Road, motion is to approve the acquisition of that property, signing the deed, et cetera.
And the deed as well?
I'm sorry, what?
Yeah, and the deed that goes with, yes, okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
Signing the deed. I don't know how that authority is delegated, or whether it's the entire body.
I believe the purchase and sale is all of us, if I'm not mistaken.
So, that's the motion.
Okay, motion and a second.
And I'm sorry you missed the conversation. Bridget was here, and we dismissed her afterwards, but with great congratulation that we've now gotten to the second transaction, second landowner, and on this property, properly identified, we remembered that we'd already seen and approved the conservation restriction
Correct, yeah.
Which will bind the town going forward. Kestrel will hold and enforce the conservation restriction.
Right.
It gets really confusing, because the town takes different roles in different properties.
So, it looks like we all need to sign the deed, and I believe we all need to sign the
Purchase and sale.
Purchase and sale.
And the purchase and sale as well.
So, the motion includes both documents.
Both, it's okay, yeah.
If just one person could sign it in front of our notary.
Okay. Why don't I do that tomorrow, then? I'll do that. So, you guys can sign it.
The rest can sign tonight.
The rest will be fine. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So, approved. Good. Um, thank you. You obviously got through business very quickly here.
I had no notice at 6:15.
We will always have meetings at 6 o'clock. I'm not adhering to anybody else. I was taking the chance to be here on time and not get here 20 minutes early.
I was shocked when we weren't here at 6 o'clock.
Well, I got tired of getting here early, so I decided I'd come on time for a change. But anyway, so, special town vote. The next thing, land acquisition. Scott, you want to say anything there?
Um, special election is June 25th, not July 25th.
Polls are open noon to 8, or noon to 7?
Uh, noon to 8.
Yep.
And the ballots should be in, hitting mailboxes for those that requested them, either today or tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah, I think they were being mailed out maybe last night even, so, yeah. And we did have, and thanks to Dan, I think, for pointing this out, WWLP had a, had an incorrect date for us on the town elections, so that hopefully has been corrected, but June 25th is the date, and for folks that have not yet seen it, it's definitely out on our town website. You can look at the town's Facebook page, if you have Facebook, or various other community pages that have got it there, and then there will be some hard copies in the senior center of the FAQ, and then we're looking at probably having a few hard copies printed up and put around to certain businesses around town, and we'll see how that goes. Okay, if anybody has questions, though, do send a note into Scott at his town administrator address, and we'll be looking at other ways to engage the community with some other questions and answers between now and June 25th. Okay. Any other comments and questions about that?
Who is "we," madam?
Who is "we"? Mostly Scott, who's got the ideas of, although he wants to have maybe a mini, mini group, we have to decide this. So, there may be folks from other committees that would join out and just answer, answer questions and things like that. So, we'll, we'll see. We're talking about a Facebook Live, if we can put that together. But we'll let Scott manage that, since he's more the expert in that than I am. Okay? Anything else on that issue? Any other questions about that?
Purchase and sale isn't signed yet, or is the seller still
Still waiting.
Fascinating?
Still waiting for a few things.
With legal, between the two
There's disagreement on terms.
Between the two lawyers, they're just talking things through, I think. I don't know that we've got any disagreement, do we, at this point?
Not that I know of. I think it's just a matter of just finishing it up.
Yeah.
Continue to be concerned that we didn't have a signed purchase and sale, especially the
In their interest as well, and I can't imagine that they won't get it done before, before we need it.
Heard that before, and
Well, if it is, then that will be our mistake, but I hope not. I hope not.
Piano fall out of the sky.
I think the folks know that, you know, they want this as much as we do, so it's their, in their interest to get it done.
Thank you.
Next, I just wanted to go through our regular Select Board meeting schedule. Just, we're going to be a little bit off schedule if, if I can propose something here, because our next meeting would be on the, hang on, will be, would normally be the 18th, which we are meeting on the 18th. So, we are meeting the 17th with the Finance Committee for a joint presentation by our auditor for the FY22 audit findings.
And that time is
That will be 6:30 on the 17th, to accommodate Financial Committee and the auditor to come in on just that topic on the 17th, and then on the 18th, we have our regular Select Board meeting. The 25th is the
It's 6:15. I'm sorry, I didn't
No, it's 6 o'clock.
6:30 on the 17th.
6:30 on the 17th.
On the 17th.
6 o'clock on the 18th.
Thank you.
Uh, the 25th is the election, and then that following week is going to be 4th of July week. So, normally, from the 18th to then, we would have our meeting on the 2nd. I'd like to propose that we skip that week and give ourselves 4th of July week off and have our meetings on the 9th and the 23rd, and then set that calendar from that going forward. I think that helps us avoid both Thanksgiving and Christmas weeks as well. So, trying to look ahead over the next six months and just trying, we'll have Scott, if you wouldn't mind, pulling out the entire schedule over the next six months and making sure that that's true, but my, my mini, look at my calendar, told me that, because we don't have to decide every, every other meeting, what our next meeting dates are. It's always a Tuesday, it's always at 6 o'clock, always a second, two meetings, I'm sorry, two weeks between a meeting, and then we have special meetings, obviously, as we need them, but. So, I'm going to propose, if that's okay with everybody, that our July meetings are July 9th and 23rd, rather than the 2nd, 16th, and 30th.
I mean, I don't have a problem with that, but doing that brings us, we're meeting Thanksgiving week, and we're meeting on Christmas Eve. So, I mean, at some point between then and November, we should adjust backwards.
We may have to. We'll, we'll take a look. If Scott will just sort of run out the schedule and see.
I'm also, I'm also happy to skip meetings.
Yeah, skip a, skip a week here after, after we get through this and meet again on the 9th, if that's okay with everybody?
I'll proxy my vote to Stephen.
Yeah, okay. All right. So, with that, I'll, not hearing any opposition to that idea, offhand, I'll just ask Scott to pull a calendar together for us for our next meeting, just to be sure.
They're already posted for the 9th and the 23rd anyway, on my town government.
Okay, well, Judy's probably ahead of me.
Sometimes it's just a reminder.
Maybe a reminder on there, yeah. It, there's some things that do it automatically as well. Is there any other business that cannot wait until our July 18th regular meeting? Offhand, is there anything? Just, just one little announcement, I guess. We've had a, a couple of, a particular request to have people that might be walking on the greenway, on the rail part of the rail trail, which is not yet a rail trail, but on the railroad part in Southampton, just walking and exploring. Please be aware that this is a non-maintained trail. You're doing so at your own risk, and please be courteous, aware of trespassing on anybody else's property, namely the abutters. Just be respectful of your neighbors and abutters if you want to go explore, but that is having work done on it with, with Tai and Man being out there doing their work, but it's not yet an open trail. I know there's a lot of adventurous people, and we don't want to quash that, but just be careful that you're not also going off the trail into other people's property. Okay?
Yes, respectful means no trespass.
Yes.
Well, I would say that clearly.
Well, yeah, and I think, I think that's basically it. I'm assuming many people that are, I mean, I don't know, I would assume some people have their property posted, and if, if they don't, nevertheless, you should still be respectful of that. John?
Yeah, just, over the past few years, this, by now, we would have set the meetings for the other departments and committees to come before us. Can I safely and pleasantly assume we're doing away with that practice, and they can send in written reports that they want us to consider?
No, I wasn't
Could I suggest that we do that, that we do that in the expensancy of time, that I'd rather, I'd rather receive written communications that can be made part of a packet, that can be posted online now that we have the new website, and disseminated out, and then we can pose our questions, rather than tie up 90 to 120 minutes of Select Board meetings, in a means of to stay to two Tuesday nights a week at our very high compensation rate of being here.
But we narrowed it down to just one, one of the two meetings a month, not, not both meetings last time.
Yeah, I would still suggest we do away with it, and get written communications in advance, other than having a public out speak time.
Can I comment on that?
Go ahead.
So, I was one of the people that stood over there and talked, and actually, I felt like there was some excellent good give and take. Maybe we could advise people to submit their reports in advance, allow us to review them, and then limit, but don't do away with the interactive aspect of it. I think that's one of the issues in our town, that we don't know how to draw together parties, even if there appears that they're not speaking of like topics, but yet there's overlap a lot. That's just
So, my response to that would be, it's a give or take, it's a yin or yang. Either we have this, and we do away with liaisons, but for example, the Board of Health, the Finance Committee, I mean, they come in and talk to us, but we have liaisons too. There's a duplication and repetitiveness, and oftentimes, just sitting here, this is my fourth year, it's like deja vu. It's Groundhog's Day on a lot of these topics. Now, if we could narrow it, for example, Parks and Rec, we don't have liaison, have them come in, our tree warden, we don't have them, but do we really need to duplicate everything? And, and to have things where people just pontificate to pontificate, I'll stop pontificating, but I don't think we need to pontificate.
Okay. I, personally, I don't take it as, unless you're describing yourself, I don't take these meetings, when they come in, as pontificating. I think it, it helps us to understand in more detail what's going on in I think it helps us to understand in more detail what's going on in those committees, or if they've got a particular issue they want to bring forward to us. We have not usually gotten written reports ahead of time, which is true, which could help us a lot, and then that just simply be a question and answer period, which could be a shorter amount. I was actually starting to work on the calendar for our 18th meeting, but some of the things that are on there, I guess, would be a question. We usually have our rep and our senator come in. We've had...
Well, I would say those are different, but where we have the duplicates happening, and then where there are the duplicates, or where we have the committees that have liaisons. If there's a certain, I mean, because I would charge each one of us, it's our responsibility to be reading these minutes that are out there, and if we have questions, we need to go to, not rely on a liaison to come through. I just, I think there's better use of our time if we're going to stick with the, and as the member that has six liaison spots, if we're going to stick with all this stuff, it becomes very difficult on somebody that also needs to, is not at the stage of their life where I don't have to deal with my daytime job.
Yeah.
That's all.
Understood. So, let me do this. Let me, for the meeting on the 18th, let me take a look at our current calendar, what it was, and then see how I can trim that to make it a little bit more realistic, shall we say. And maybe not, maybe it's not every month, maybe it's every other, whatever.
And/or, I mean, because you've been doing a really great job over the past 18 to 24 months in getting us out of here by 10:30, 11 o'clock at night. You've been doing much better. Well, tonight, this is a special meeting.
I think we've been closer to 8:30 lately.
Yes, but the first couple of years, it was hard.
I know, I know.
And we're trying, so, I mean, my other suggestion is if we want to keep this, okay, but, you know, not to have another meeting, but could we have a standalone meeting where that's all that we talk about? It's just the reports and the free-for-all, so, because a lot of times when folks come in, to Cindy's point, and it's the back and forth, depending on how big that agenda is behind it, in my mind, I'm like, I'm not asking any questions, because I see three hours of work ahead of us here.
Takes too long, yeah. Got it. Okay. No, I think it's a matter of time management control on my part as well, so, but yeah.
It might be worthwhile to maybe consider wrapping that into the budget process as well, because we're going to have people coming in to present their budget, and maybe just extend that a little bit longer while they're here and have them give the update.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. We had four or five questions that we wanted them to sort of expound upon when they came to us, and so maybe we can take a look at that again, too, and just see what's the most relevant stuff that we wouldn't pick up out of a set of minutes from the meeting that...
Like, just fine tune. I'm just suggesting we fine tune the process.
I think fine tuning is a good...
What cost efficiencies you identify, what technology are you lacking?
Yeah, we can...
Those crosswalks, other committees could be made more explicit.
That's viable, yeah.
I was going to mention finance.
Sure, okay. I think that's...
Thinking about next year's budget. What are we not getting to this year, because we don't have the right funds?
Right. Well, and I think, I know Scott's got some ideas for a new process in general, or a better updated, earlier process to start the whole budget thing rolling.
Consistent with Joan's suggestion, we might get more impact if we thoughtfully, you know, framed the agenda and rely mostly on written reports.
Yeah, okay. All right. So, with that, nothing else for tonight that I'm aware of. We had a request for some carryover leave for Randall. I'd rather put that on the actual agenda and do that on Tuesday. I think in my, just for everybody's sake, we're trying to avoid any last-minute additions, believe me, I am.
I know, I know.
To the agenda. We asked for information to be into Scott by Wednesday, Wednesday noon. Thursday, hopefully, packages can get out to us, and that's been the plan. And especially when it's a decision item, I really don't want to put it on last minute.